She's already learned how to drive a plow, which, which they haven't taught me. They haven't let me drive a plow, they've already taught her. Uh, no, she's hit the ground running. And then we also have, uh, Joe Moran with us. Um, Joe. Joe, this is his second day of appointment with us. Joe is our facilities maintenance manager. He's, uh, part of our succession. For, um, Tom Schwann, when Tom decides to retire this summer and take his well, his retirement time to your somewhere. So he gave us some advance notice so we can learn, Joe can learn what keys open what. And Joe has an extensive facilities maintenance, um, background and history. And also is a veteran serving in the US Navy and. So we're very fortunate to have them both join us and it really worked out well that this workshop was happening where I was.
All right, we'll get started with the meeting. Uh, John's already got us live on, uh, on YouTube, so. I will turn it over to Mr. Simpson to take us through the facilities workshop.
Thank you, Council President.
So. I, I won't do too much of what this isn't. Sometimes when we have meetings, I tell you what it's not gonna be about, but I'll focus a little bit on what we're planning to try to get through. So this is. This is the city administrator putting together a presentation for the council, making two facilities. It isn't something we bought. Better architecture, engineering, burn, do design and try to figure out. Um, so there's, there's gonna be some numbers involved today, a lot of help from Tom. Um, and Elmasi and Jennifer, of course, trying to pull it together, but. You know, this is a presentation, a city, a generalist. Presentation to the council, so. Um, I had some help from the specialists, but it's still, it's a thirty thousand foot view. So tonight I'd like to take everybody through, um. So, city major facilities by the numbers. Square footage and cost and when it was built and some of that, so you just have a kind of an overall view of things. Um, uh, there's a timeline slide in here where I tried to, tried to. Um, I was a nice job of taking down. A bunch of dates and trying to show you kind of the progression of our, our facilities. Um, that may or may not be used by you as a decision maker to see whose turn it is. Often that's what those timelines are, it's like, okay. Who's, when did we do the last project and which department and, and kind of where are we at in progression? It also can show you like. The library was built in this year. Hasn't had any, haven't had any investment since then. If it had a major remodel, when was that year and how many years early on that remodel? So it kind of gives. From a layperson's perspective, you can kind of understand, hey, if it's been forty years since you did anything with a facility. It's probably coming up to something. We'll talk a little bit about some of the studies that the, the city has paid for to give you an idea of what. Projects might be on the horizon. Um, and then. We put some of those projected building projects just kind of in a pile. And then we get a little discussion at the end. So this is. There's two outcomes I'd like you to have is better out. Overall understanding of the. The depth and breadth of our, our facilities and maybe some basic understanding of how old they are, um, who they are. Um, and what kind of investment you put in. And then it may be more of a presentation tonight that leads to more questions than answers for some of you, so you may have some follow up and you want us to think about for. Like a facilities workshop number two. Um, or you wanna narrow in on some specific public safety or public works or parks, um, and talk about that. So. We tried, I'll, I'll be flipping through these slides. If you need me to stop or you really think we should stop as a group and talk about it, or you have clarifying questions, feel free to, to shout them out. But we'll quickly just go through. Ten, eleven slides here on some of the major city facilities and I tried to include where readily accessible inventory, square footage and age. And again. This wasn't, I didn't go out and field verify. I haven't spent hours. Looking at blueprints to make sure that it's exactly the square footage. We'll try to give you the information that we had in the computer systems. Or on blueprints or layouts. And in some cases from that most historical memories, which we're hoping that were accurate at the time that historical memory was written. They told the council in nineteen eighty-eight that of the twenty-three thousand square foot building. And that's about what Tom and I thought it was, then that's the number that's in here, so it's, it's a pretty, pretty close. There's a bunch of things that are not in this presentation. Um, we had an opportunity to see what those things were with the hills. So. Tom's spreadsheet of other structures is extensive, it's pretty incredible. That's not really the focus of tonight's presentation. Puts and sheds and vaults and. Little shelters and toilet buildings. The pool mechanical building, that kind of stuff is not really. Park, it's an important part of our operations, but it's not really the subject of tonight. So tonight is. What you pride consider to be the bigger major facility in the city. Most of the ones that were all piled together on Own Street and Second Street are. Decades of life as a city. We had everything operating along location. You'll see over time. We've grown and the facilities have grown with us and they've spread out across the city. So here's an overby map. Of the. Facility that we're talking about. You can kind of see. You know, obviously some central stuff. Um. A little bit east and west and a little bit south, and then of course the police station is our. The northern buildings presentation. So I'm gonna stop a little bit on this one and we just, um, have some time to look at it. Again, this is. To the best of our ability, kind of a capture of significant investments. It doesn't mean that. We may not have done a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollar project, which is a significant investment, but not for the scale of this presentation tonight. So this would be. You, you probably needed to get in the. Hundreds of, multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars for me to put it in the timeline event. An example of that would be. Library construction and then lower level was, you know, kind of for the purposes of tonight's presentation, that would have been significantly of the building project or investment. That doesn't mean there hasn't been. The Solarium and other, there's other building facility projects that have been done at many of these. I'm just highlighting kind of the big milestones. And it's possible I miss some. Um. So the octagon is kind of the beginning. Here and then we run through Glover Schoolhouse restoration, which was kind of finally completed in our mind in twenty twenty. And so. Again, if you can envision the city, it didn't have the safest park back here. So we had Glenn and Hoffman as our two regionals. Um, this is right before most of the. Before Hyvee Meadows, before South Point, before. Before, uh, it's my neighborhood called Rolling Hills addition. So core city. Many of our municipal functions located, I guess I couldn't have for effect the picture of the sort of city hall. Post office, fire station, police station, utility office, public works. Um, garage-ish. Location, but then as, as the community grew. It kind of determined what its priorities were. Um. In nineteen ninety, I'd say was the, you know, a big, okay, let's take this portion of our work and put it out. Public Works facility, library. Then they built a standalone ambulance building. Um, lower level of the library. Wastewater plant lab. Now, again, for wastewater plant, there's a number of things done, but that was a pretty significant. Building addition, they changed the, the location. Um. City Hall in oh nine. Then we did a remodel of the second home. For public safety. Um, and then. Glen Park bath house. Uh, which would be like, um. The pool. Remodel we did for the seventh birthday, I think it was. Does that sound right to people that run here? Um, so we had our birthday party there. And so that was. With Ross, we did a remodel. And we stripped out some of the interior cinder block walls and opened up the chambers. And they made some very minor changes to the mechanical building and then the pool that got some. Some work at that, not all significant. And then. Personal bank, where Paul's field, I was trying to decide if I included that or not. I mean, it's a city. It's on city. Land. The agreement says that it's the city's field and stadium. It's a, um, fundraiser improvement, it's a leasehold improvement. There may be some of those other ones that I haven't thought about. You may help me tonight with those, like, well, what about, I don't. Um, but I could do that. Um, then we did Hoffman Shelter. And then Glen Park Station and Glover School Restoration. I guess you could throw triangles in there, sorta. Yeah, I mean, um. I'd say that is a facility I didn't, I didn't think too much about that, that's true. That was very significant cost for us. So let's just kind of run through those. So kind of Public Works was the first. And then we run all the way to Glover Schoolhouse. So. And I'm, I'm gonna go relatively quickly if you're with me on the slides or the paper. Or not, that's actually. So how many, who has, who of the council has not been to Public Works?
You know what? I have not been to Public Works.
All the years you've been here.
I have not been to Public Works.
So we'll remedy that too, right? That'd be good for me to get a. Show I am in some of these facilities if you have not been to them, so we can try to get you, if you want, you know, it doesn't. It's not a requirement of a city council person to be in every building you go. But if you're interested, we'll certainly get you. Uh, library. The ambulance building, now we're leasing this building, but it's still owned by the city. Um, that seemed like a pretty good deal for, in fact, under a half million dollars, it's a pretty nice little, little building for that. I wish we were still making them that way. Uh. Then the library lower level. Uh, here again, we're doing our best to look at memos and the historical documents, gifts and things to try to figure out what the mix was. Um. So. Wastewater treatment plant, this was the big lab and. Kind of this branding building, behind that is an old white, like cinder block building now serving. So. City Hall. Again, we've done some things since we opened, um. Added walls and doors and took them down, but. Pretty much it's. Similar to what was on the most. Public safety building remodel. I think the design, I'm not sure the design cost is the same here, couldn't, I couldn't verify that for sure, it's six twenty-nine senior year. I always thought of it as a million dollar. Investment to give us ten, the thought was this was gonna get in ten years. We kind of patched the holes in the rope and we did some things that we needed to make bathrooms work and. Did some remediation. Actually, Tom was the remediation in oh nine, or did we do that after the fact? Some of the base.
Remediation would have been on the portion of the upgrades.
So. That was kind of a get us by. This is the bath house project. So we did, I think we did. Window work, but not too much, we tried, but they keep the historic windows on that side. There's some cement work and other things, um, but. This wasn't too much for cost, but I just thought we should know it. Then. The field was done in year of service fourteen, and then they had a significant upgrade in nineteen. Then we got our first scheme of grants for this shelter. Um. So that was about. It's kind of ominous cost, there's these things. And then we, we learned some lessons and we really upped the class there on, on our. Um. Twice as much for cost, more than twice. Police station. Most of, this is the one most of you are probably most familiar with, cause it's just the most recently made a lot of memos and. Discussion and workshops. So just a reminder here, this is an addition. Uh, about six thousand new and then we did what they considered heavy. Heavy reconstruction here and then dark blue is. That's kind of the model we'll get to here, talking about fire station. Glover's claws, you know, I didn't do the, the raising the hands, so it's. Put you on the spot a little bit. Um. So Public Works, we set a couple folks, everybody's been in the library?
Yeah, you probably won't raise your hand.
Ambulance, have people been in and around lately? Wastewater plant is one that I think actually most of you probably got to where you don't. City Hall, I've been. Um, public safety after the remodel. Have most of you been in there? Um, Glen Park, I would imagine. Um, Hoffman Stone Shelter, I don't, that's another one that many people might not have been in, but. Um. Glen Park. And then who has not been in Glover since it's been remodeled? That would be, that'd be a cool one to begin to see.
I was just thinking, Scott, I visited that in nineteen sixty-one.
And your sister.
Here, here, my sister Perry was the last, first period of the last year that school was open. I would have gone the next year, but I did go to school with her. You're old.
Yeah, I think. I think that, so. Glover would have been, I think nineteen sixty-one. I'll bait it, Todd, I think it was sixty-one or sixty-two was their last purchase.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And we bought it in two thousand three. And it only took us about nineteen years to figure out. Yes. There was a prediction by a couple council members that this one dollar would be very expensive and it turned out to be true. All right, so let's talk about a little bit of debt service and budget consideration. So what is, you know, how did we get all this stuff? Like I said, and, and there's a number of funding sources in there. Many of these projects were funded with borrowing, it was something the city decided was probably. We have been lucky with FEMA funding. The library projects were very generously, um. Had a lot of donations, that's one of the areas we had the most donations to the library. Um. Some impact fee funds have been used, impact fee funds, this is not an impact fee workshop, but impact fees. Have to be spent depending on their. Their maturity, they have to be spent in about seven years and they have to be on things related to the impact of new growth. Um, there's been changes in that law like seven times in my career, so. You know, there's like two thousand three impact fees, there's two thousand seven impact fees, but for the most part it's seven years. And you can't just use it for like maintenance of things that, that wear and tear, it's supposed to be for. Essentially construction or expansion of facilities related to impacts from new growth. So we're, we have some balance in park. The way our park fees are set up is. The council set a policy to collect certain home from each building permit, and then you've allocated a percentage of that for regional parks. And a percent that's supposed to go to the local parks served by those buildings. So some of the local. allocations are a little out of balance, there's a few neighborhood parks that we probably spent a little bit more money. That's actually a fairly good balance at this point. Sterling Bonds was out and Highland, our Hyvee Meadows was out a little bit. But we've had a number of building permits since they were kind of on whack and. Those even now. Uh, library, we're collecting a certain amount of library each year, and I should know the numbers and I don't, um, and then fire. Those are the three primary. Um, current debt service, we have small note. Library. And large notes for city hall and park and police station. Um, you can see. We'll get a little bit of relief this year in debt service, um, when that's retired, but we really don't get much. Uh, let's see, I don't know if I can get off the top of my head. City Hall, I think was around four hundred thousand a year at that service. And these two are two something, Josh? Two fifty or something like that?
Yes.
Um, and if I'm wrong, you can tell me. So. So the next kind of, kind of cascade in debt service where we want to say, oh, paid off the mortgage, we can probably take on mortgage. Is probably that twenty-eight construction period, because we usually can start and finish construction the year ahead of the bond. And, cause the bond usually is issued and there's a wondering egg before you gotta pay principal, um. So we were getting no help from anybody for anything. I would say your next opportunity really to do significant capital facility. Investments is twenty twenty-eight. Um, and then right behind that, what I consider to be right behind, you know, three, four years, not that long for me to wait in the general scheme of things. So right behind that, you have a pretty significant chunk of Glen Park being paid off. And then we've got to wait again for, you know, there's a ten year period in between to a police station. So, given all the things that city councils have done over the last. Forty years. They've done a pretty significant job of managing the debt service impact. It's pinched a little bit here, so we've had. Um, the last. Few years with. The city, with city hall coming on, which I'll know was, that decision was made before I got here. So it's like, I convinced the council to spend all this money. Um. I'll take the responsibility that needs to be. Um. But essentially. In that period, probably in the two thousands. Um. We, we did a fair amount of borrowing, I was gonna look at this. So, I mean, there's, this wasn't general fund borrowing, it might have been chill back, but when they've had a general fund, the tax haven't even backed. You know, city hall and then the public safety. And then Glen Park, that was pretty heavy borrowing. Those of you who were here hopefully remember that in the workshops, I said. If you do Glen Park, you really, you've decided what you're gonna spend your money on pretty well. And so that. Prediction was reasonably consistent with life. Although we've been able to, we had some big budget years and we were able to pay down some debt. So that's why we don't have a lot of facility issues, cause some of the other ones were paid off. And the original mortgage for the library was paid off. Um, like a couple of years in advance of what the original debt service schedule was, we had, if I don't remember, if anybody remembers the. The fire breather. They burned the mortgage. And we had a fire breather and they were whirling their fire and then they burned the, they burned the mortgage. In true library fashion, we had a, we had a big spectacle, it was pretty fun. Uh. We haven't since burned any mortgages with that much. Okay, we did it outside. The fire chief wanted to make sure it was outside. Um. So. You've heard that before, you'll, and you've heard it again for me tonight. Your. Your window of opportunity for not having a significant levy effect on general fund backs. Facility projects is probably twenty twenty-eight. Unless we can find federal money, state money, contributions from donations or some other creative, um, funding mechanism. Bio solids is on the docket already. And then I just kind of added a guess. Which has no bearing on, you would decide ultimately for policy. Cause you will make the decision about where everything lands in CIP, but. If I was trying to guess based on what I heard people want. I've heard that we want to get fire station. Work on Hoffman, whatever. The Glen Park billion equivalent is in Hoffman. I've heard the library, I've heard about some kind of power plant reuse from councils in Bass. A museum or, uh, some other something, and then general recovery. Can't remember what, oh, public, this is.
I'm gonna remodel public.
Public Works is covered up. I, that is not in my. I'm not recommending that or, I'm just kind of showing you, illustrative of how you might get this stuff done. Um. And getting this stuff done. Certainly from here. The last two is gonna require some kind of prioritization and assistance. There's not enough money just by retiring city hall and Glen Park to do these two projects. The debt service, unless construction prices totally collapse in the next ten years, um. The cost per square foot of public buildings. Means whatever you retired from twenty years ago is not gonna equate to what you're building now. So I'll just keep that in mind. So just a quick overview and then we can get to the discussion. This is the bio solids. Pretty crude engineering drawings, I don't have relation drawings, nor are they gonna be pretty moving anyways. Um, but. You can see we've got the, underneath this is where the. Like this is gonna be the top floor essentially. Underneath this is where the press is gonna be, this is a press dryer. Um, and it's gonna be in this building here, there's a pipe that takes sludge. Um, we want some de-watering sludge and instead of us loading any tanker trucks to take it to Ellsworth. It's gonna go over to the ironing building. And then it ends up in a silo, which I think is about twenty-five feet tall. About right, Kevin. So. That's the facility for wastewater. And that. Likely will be geo-backed, by his director and mayor are still debating that. Um. Geo backing would help us with the levy limit. Craziness?
I hope you're email, sorry.
Twenty-five foot silo?
It's about twenty-five to thirty-five foot silo, twenty-five foot high building. Two and a half stories, it'll be up. It'll be a, um, a mess of need inside there to hold food.
And then, um. So geo-backed potentially to help us with the levy limit issue, cause we're gonna issue so much debt. In order to have a levy limit capacity, it's a loss, we can change that law, which I, someday we could. Um. But it'll be revenue-supported geo, so wastewater, we've already done this, if you all recall, we did the rate studies and everything for this. There may be an update to that about the time we put this online. Uh, but it's actually, this isn't, this is not competing with the other things you probably want to do. Um, even though it'll compete somewhat with our geo debt limit, which we're in pretty good shape on.
Scott, before you go off that slide. From a site map, from a site plan perspective. I know in the Kenny Corridor Plan. We call for the kayak launch to be put, would be in that lower left corner.
It would be off of this map, off of this airport.
But it's gotta come in off Powell up there, right?
Um, the west, it comes down the line.
Okay, so it would come. We're keeping that top of mind, it's my.
Yes, I do not believe we would want to. Have it inerent traffic for the renovation through the middle of the wastewater. Not because of orders or anything, it's just because of operationally, I don't think, yeah, a lot of people messing around. And there's a high line here that you can't see, this air photo. But this is, I don't know, sixty-nine KB or some giant amount of voltage. Um, there, which is why these buildings are like this, we're just kind of building on the knee. We probably could, but I don't think it makes sense since we own a fair amount of land there to do that. And that it gives us the ability potentially to expand those buildings in the future to. Which is not the plan right now, I mean, this, this will take care of. All thing, other things being equal, the DNR not providing new. Standards for something that we don't know about today, this is a, takes care of us for twenty years or so.
And the dead building footprint will also allow Scott for a second dryer if ever needed, so.
So. Fire station, what I think most of you wanna talk about. And that's very good for me. I don't know if copies are the same, but. This says new apparatus bay. Here, and this is renovation main level ninety two, about ninety three hundred square feet, basically about twenty five hundred square feet. And this is about thirteen thousand square feet or a little under, um, for apparatus bay. So Walt, who worked with us on Police Station, we asked them to do some. Concept testing, so this is not engineer drawings or anything like that, but can we, can we do a fire station building here? And I'll talk a little bit about why, but. So greenfield fire station, twenty eight thousand square feet of what we're building. Study plan was, is about sixteen million current bid prices. Up to five hundred dollars a foot. Just seems insane, like I would think we're making like isotopes or something in that kind of building, but. It's a fire station. So, and that's what they're bidding. A lot of Minnesota stations, obviously, that we're all on. So. They gave us six different options. We had A and B and three options with M. They kind of messed around with the site that we have to try to figure it out.
When you say the site they have, what center you've got to go on?
Second, this is second and, uh. So as a comparison, sixteen million for greenfield construction of the new fire station. All single level. Big parking lots and all that stuff. Trying to get about the same space on this bill, this footprint. Is about eight million. You could spend sixteen million on a plant here also, uh, if you found out. Say, how about eight million? Um, what would that get us? And we were, we were able to do just about everything. The only thing that's not good, this would be. Um, living corners potentially, which could be added on here in the future without too much trouble. And the reason my staff is working on this, so first let me tell you why we're on second and home and only second and home. Twenty twenty eight or twenty twenty nine is where I just told you, if you wanna build a fire station, we're gonna likely do it on our own till then. And even that eight million dollars, a lot of debt service. If we wanna do anything before that, now is not a bad time to be asking federal government for money. They have, they're, they're giving more of it out than they used to, the local governments. Division Street is the dividing line, obviously, between two counties. It's also the congressional district line. Congressman Tom Tiffany does not do earmarks. Congressman Van Orden does do earmarks. Um, Senator Baldwin is in favor of earmarks. Senator Johnson is. Uh, non-committal. I don't know if he's, he hasn't come out as against or for. So that means if we got a senator to help us with earmark, we probably could go either place. If we want the power of whole house of Congress, we need to be in Van Orden's district. If you recall, this was the optimal location for our standpoint. This is the best location to bring people into. With a volunteer fire department and send people out from for our geography and what their stats. But we wanted to do redevelopment down here. And we had the jug handle, which we thought was an equally, about equal site, all things, um, being considered. But that's not reality. If the council wants to do a sixteen million dollar or eight billion or ten million dollar greenfield development on the jug handle. We're not likely to be that competitive in the earmark process. This location puts us much closer to reality. Actually, I think we, and the fact that we're remodeling an existing facility also pushes up, pushes us up the line. Compared to a brand new fire station. By doing, tearing down the building here and putting a new apparatus, we're doing the newest part, the most. Typically, the most expensive part is new construction on the least expensive square footage to build. So apparatus bay is cheaper than office and living quarters and bathrooms and, um, kitchens. So this also gives them the potential to do drive through days, which the other, other ways are challenging. Allows us to do a two story or two and a half story, um, building that allows them to do mesene and other things. And the physical masonry structure of this building, including the egress up and downstairs and the basement there is a good. Space that can be remodeled at a lesser cost per square foot to yield a better product than we have not. Um, and get us pretty close to the spacing. So that's what the focus is from staff on your, uh, congressionally directed spending earmark. Yeah, we think this is an eight million dollar proposal. Um, the apparatus bay is about four point seven. Um, plus F F and E and some other things, so maybe between four point seven and five point five of an eight million dollar project. We're expecting to ask Congress for that. They would build us the new, we would take care of the site work and remodeling and demolition. I think that's gonna move our score. Pretty good. But what you see is probably what you're gonna get. We haven't spent any time specing this out and deciding what color chairs and which rooms are gonna have the toilets and all that stuff. But I'm very confident based on our experience, Walt. And the ringer we ran them through with the police station, that, that this is good information. So it tested.
Scott, how many we get, how many parking spots are we gonna lose if we bring apparatus in from the bottom? Or from the top, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. Some, okay. Then, I mean, technically. The apparatus likely could be through, this is like a hangar door almost. So they probably could come through the alley, but I doubt we'll recommend that.
So there'll be a part to deal with. We're pretty, again, we're pretty premature, so.
Yeah, I get all, I get it.
If this is exactly gonna stick out like this, or maybe we go to half the alley or. I doubt we're gonna get rid of the alley. We're assuming we're gonna keep the alley. So we didn't design into the alley.
Scott, what do you think that property is worth if, without a fire station, but if it was to redevelop for next use, what, what's the value of that?
I don't think I can answer that without doing any more work.
But there is value.
Absolutely. No, you're saving, and, and when you do a greenfield development too. You're assuming you have to buy a site. In our case, we don't have to, so we're, you know, maybe fifteen million dollars instead of a million dollars for land, you know?
And if we wanted to do anything with Elm Street and as in developing it into. Um, I'll say a park area going down to Main Street Park and then. And doing that, it probably wouldn't be advisable to have freighter trucks entering out into that. That avenue or that street.
Uh, it depends on what you're talking about. I mean, you, keep in mind the volume of our fire department.
At this time.
At this time. And the fact that they'll have doors likely, um, Second Street still. It, it may or may not be an issue. I mean, if this, what you're saying is, could we make this a festival street?
Right.
Limited to pedestrians most of the time. I don't think a fire station per se would limit that. It would be challenging. And if certainly if you have River Falls digs here, you're gonna do what we do now, which is we pull everything out and park it somewhere else so that they can get out. We already have that issue with, let me close Second Street.
And we talked Friday, um, about this, um, concept here. We have the property that's across Austin Second Street, um, Austin's Park and the property that was originally built or bought for an ambulance in that. Um, or ambulance building. Would we consider moving that there? And then you could have a two story where you're entering out onto Second Street. And then you could also enter into from the alley because of the topography and.
Yep, you, you could do a greenfield site there if you could acquire about three other properties in that block. I think the challenge is you would lose all of your. You, you're saving. This part of the building is saving you that six or eight million dollars. If you go across the street, it's all greenfield construction. I think there are scenarios where you have part of the building on one side of the street, part of the other. I don't think those scenarios are really practical.
Okay, so let's pretend they say yes.
I was gonna, gonna ask about time.
Yeah, so how soon do we have to? We gotta find money to the rest of it, right?
We do. Yeah, if you want, if we want to go. Um, we, it's not, you have to do it in twelve months. I mean, you'll have to have significant commitment to do it. We can probably drag our feet a little bit so that we can get. The, our funding requirement to be closer to twenty twenty eight, but it's not gonna be twenty twenty eight. It's probably gonna be. Twenty to five or twenty six. It, and it also depends on where that money is appropriated. So if it's earmarked, it's put in somebody's budget. And USDA has different rules and E D A has different rules than. Department of Energy, which we're not, that's not what we're looking for the money, but. They told us between twenty four and forty eight months is kind of what you have to do to show. That you're spending money and you're gonna get this project on before they pull it back. It's all gonna be, each earmark though is federal fiscal year, so it's. When we get an earmark in this appropriations bill, it will be. October one of twenty three through September of twenty four is when they are gonna want to encumber accrue the expense. But each, each agency has slightly different rules we're finding in all, so depending on where the earmark ends up. So like for biosol, we got earmarked. Two years ago. That is in. Which one is that? I can't remember what agency that's in now. But we had to kind of follow their rules for appropriations.
Was it U S feeding? Well, in simple terms, we need to spend three and a half million to get eight million free.
Uh, we're spending three and a half to four to get four and a half to five. Yeah, we, we, I don't see a scenario which we. We have not proposed. You have not proposed a basic remodel of the station. We've kind of said, this is what will give us twenty years of service and allow us to stay at that site for forty years. Cause you could add the quarters and things later if you had to. We had talked about, should we just ask for earmark for study money? Should you just ask for five hundred thousand to plan the fire station? We thought, well, we'll just be in the same spot we're in now. You'll have a better plan. No money to get that. So we're kind of going. Not for broke, but it will be close, cause we'll have to. We'll have to figure out a way to pull and push debt service to be able to do it. Yeah, and we haven't had a discussion yet with fire. Their contract requires them to kind of come along. We don't, I don't know that we would take the tone and say, we agree with whatever we say, but. This is different too. I mean, it builds a facility, but they're currently forty percent of their revenue, so. There's probably gonna be negotiations there, like, hey, do you wanna pay us? Do you guys wanna take out debt? Or do you wanna try to get a loan? Or do you wanna try to get a grant? Cause the, the rules might be able to get. Some grant from some agency that we can as a city and use that to pay some portion of capital. I would suspect they're just gonna want it in their rates, you know, for twenty years or whatever, which is kind of how we built. The last six hundred thousand dollar project, they paid capital contribution to that.
I think it's reasonable to say if we get those funds, that's a good location. But with that said, would that location qualify for a plan? Say like, uh, for River Falls crates, I have a plan that states. Uh, that one percent on capital improvement could be used to, but maybe our, our kind of back to the downtown. Uh, you know, with themes of our city, bird city, tree city, bee city, monarch city, renewable energy. Uh, is that a reasonable, uh, type of request if we were to do that as part of the River Falls crates?
Yeah, we would expect that you're gonna, when you approve the project, the council's gonna set. What amount for River Falls crates. It's up to one, so if it's one, if the council decides it's one percent. Well, one percent of the eight million would be eighty thousand that you can put into the art. And remember, not all of that's for a project. Some will be, we could be some for an immediate project and then. All there is is for maintenance of the existing projects.
And would some of that to district be used to clean out the downtown too then?
Yeah, I, so this project is not particularly dramatic. Modification of existing on the ground conditions. I mean, the blight you're cleaning up is the city's. They're like, we can.
I think that's what they just said.
We can, and will not be likely advisable or recommended by me. I mean, there's probably scenarios in which we could grab stuff and try to, but the, uh, tin you can only contribute. Tin can only do any funding contribution based on. New growth and development that's caused by a tin, so it'd be hard to justify that we need more money at the fire station because one building up.
Okay, so I think I see what you're saying. So the River Falls create would qualify for up to a moment we set for our project. Um, such as putting urals up in the back of those buildings, but the tin itself isn't advisable, the same sense of cleaning up the back part of the downtown.
Yeah, you probably use tin separately from those other projects that you're talking about. If I understand the question right, that's, that's how I would answer it.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
So. We do have a vision and plans for future use, so you should understand fire, public works, library. And then we have some plans for Glen Hoffman, the pool and Kenny plans. So Kenny and the pool are concept, very rough concepts, right? So we have a drawing of a pool and how layout, we don't have a budget, we don't have really any current engineering estimates. Kenny clan is the same way. It says footbridge here, it says outdoor. Area here, it says fishing area here, it says redo the, the dam, lower dam into some kind of bridge, but we don't have. So we kind of have an inventory, but we don't have a cost. Glen and Hoffman, we have some costs that are dated, so Glen, we know. If you build that warming house or other bathroom building in twenty eighteen, it would have cost this amount of money. It would have been about this size. And then Hoffman, we have some of the same information, like if you build a pavilion, it's about this size. It goes in this location. In twenty eighteen, it cost this amount of money. So library would be the most, library and public works are the most recent. So you have a pretty good inventory, both of them about existing conditions. You have discussion with the current users. Primary staff, but some library has more engagement than public works does for its users. And it says, this is what we project and like forward, we're gonna need. To modernize or bring our facilities up. So you got pretty good information, pretty recent information here. Fire, we have the five rules report, which gives you pretty much the, the, like. If we were designing what we wanted in a fire station in that year, all bells and whistles, that's what that. That what is.
Quick question for you, Scott. Um, one about the library. Now, the library's master plan, they'll be included in our comprehensive plan, right? Or is there gonna be other aspects of it?
Yeah, the comp plan references most of these things. But now that you're bringing it up, we can verify whether it's included or not.
We're gonna make sure we get our community's desires in there for that. And the other thing I was gonna bring up is. Um, when it comes to the pool, I'm in favor of having an inclusive community engagement process. There are companies that do this, looks like we've done with our community's engagement plan, where I know, cause I've talked with one of them, it takes five years to do. But what they do is they ask people if they'd like to see in their community or when they do a project for swimming pool. The design owner, they don't do the construction. They just take in what people like and then it goes through the normal processes. And, uh, if you look at the cities of Thorpe and some other ones that have gotten horns in the state, they didn't break the bank and they did exactly what the community asked them to do. For the different elements that went into the pool. But it takes at least five years for a design company to actually do those creative plans where they get the community engagement and they come up with a plan before they submit it. Then it usually takes a minimum, another five years to actually implement a construction crew to do it.
So, which is a good segue too. We've already got on paper all of these things that would be good additions or. You could, are necessary additions to the community or desire, however you wanna categorize it. You could argue necessary additions to the community or desire, however you wanna categorize them. Rate funded facilities are reasonably addressed, so my advice to you is that water, electric. To a certain extent, stormwater um and wastewater. If if I have my crystal ball, reasonably taken care of. Whatever comes up or that we already have in the plans, we can likely deal with the rates. So I don't think we need to spend a lot of time prioritizing within that. Because the other reason is you can't take the rate money and use it for these other projects anyway, so. I would just say rate stuff is in pretty good shape. The conclusion is that you've got limited general fund debt service to address all of this. So choices has to be made. If you don't wanna have any impact on existing services, which is always a choice for council. You could say, we wanna make these capital investments and we need to free up four hundred thousand dollars a year out of the budget. Go firing four hundred thousand dollars and cut. So that's always an option. It doesn't seem like the leading one that this council has told us to pursue, so staff has not spent a lot of time saying. If we wanna build a fire station, can we cut operations by four hundred thousand a year to do that? Just being transparent about where we're at as staff. That's an option. You could raise eleven more. If you do it, you're gonna have to likely go to referendum. But that's an option too. If you're like, well, we don't. We're gonna make choices, but we're gonna do these things anyways because we protect our pressing needs of the community. But you're likely gonna need to go to referendum. Because there isn't, there isn't really a way that I could press a button and get you the the capacity you need without a referendum with the current level needs. And then we can go out and try to get whatever we can. So you can prioritize based on what you think you have the best chance of getting other people's money. To pay for it, whether that's donations, a capital campaign. State grants, federal grants, um, you know, low interest loans is not gonna get you. That we're not gonna fund. I've seen a lot lately about cleaning water and legislators are saying, well, cities have all these resources to take care of them. They can just go out and get a clean water loan. I'm like, well, it's a loan. For some cities that are in really desperate poverty, they get it. A lot of that forgiven, so it's forgivable loan, which essentially is a grant, but the city River Falls is not getting a forgivable. Loan from the Clean Water Fund, so. There isn't a lot of tools in the box. Tid can help with some of this, but very limited because of the restrictions on. Tid, you might be able to pay for part and part shelters or other things because you could argue that that's a growth thing. You could raise your impact fees and create more revenue there, um, but. Likely, you're just gonna have to be disciplined about what you wanna do and decide what your number one priority is. Try to take care of that and then work on your number two once you've got a plan for number one. Trying to, frankly, trying to do a twenty year fiscal plan or debt service plan and try to get all the things you want paid for. It's gonna be pretty difficult to do. Because even the fire station. It could be four point five million, or it could be five point six million, or it could be eight million. Every million is gonna matter from a debt service perspective and how you can get it paid for without a, without property tax levy impacts.
We've got the choice to make, I think, between fire. And then we don't get a lot of room to do anything else. We don't get a warming shelter and a skating rink. We don't get a pool for a while. And we live in the reality of other taxing, other taxing jurisdictions that impact our residents. Namely, the school district. They're telegraphing pretty hard that they're gonna go back to referendum again. And, you know, if we go to referendum and they go to referendum, I I'm a firm believer that there's only so much. Referendum oxygen in the conversation. And we're gonna force people to decide between kids or fire, and I don't think we really wanna do that. Maybe we do, I don't know. I don't think a giant increase to the to the levy is a great answer either because. You could do referendum or you can do an increase to the levy, it still shows up on the property text statement. Doesn't matter how it gets there. So the discipline, I think, is gonna have to be there. If we truly can get fire money. And pull this off, we have to be disciplined enough to not. Look at the shiny object that comes floating in front of us for a, you know, water park or something like that.
You think it's worth noting as well that um we do believe we can continue to function in the current, out of the current fire department to twenty twenty-eight. Staff is prepared to do that, absent any earmark or or direct appropriations. Um, however, it's still, you know, we we still need to upkeep that building while they operate out of it. And there will be CIP related expenditures requested. But staff is being very thoughtful about the ROI on those with, you know, kind of in the back of our mind. Considering a build in twenty twenty-eight. But we're okay to function with the fire station we have for the next several years while we kind of figure out the best course of action. The services will still be provided.
But if we don't do this scenario though, we still have to find a way to swap the sixteen million somewhere down the road. And it's probably gonna be more than that.
Yeah, I would suggest that we are not, I think, given the estimates we see for Greenfield, that is not in compliance. Like I don't, unless unless the community is really prepared for a referendum and just says whatever costs we're gonna do. I don't see how you fit the sixteen million in in the next ten years. I mean, it's. I don't know how you can get ahead of that service. It's just, it's a whole different scale than what we're used to. It would be, I mean, sixteen million would be equivalent to Glenn Park, the police station and City Hall. And and we did those over a twelve or fifteen year period. If you put one of those in the debt service, you would be telling the rest of the council for the next fifteen years, just don't worry, we took care of. We decided what you're gonna get for the next fifteen years. You don't have to spend a lot of time on CIP because there's not gonna be any money. But yeah, I think, I think we also learned through this exercise that we have to determine. A scale and scope of whatever the project will be. If we're gonna do a Greenfield site out of the dug handle. It's not going to be a twenty-nine thousand square foot facility. It's gonna have to be phased approach over time. Because I I don't see that map working. Unless the com- the community says to you all, that's what it costs and that's what we want. And you'd have to go to refer. And it would add, we haven't even calculated because we just thought it wasn't even in the realm of possibilities. But that's not a little level increase, that's. Sixteen million is a. A million dollars of debt service a year. And our current levy is is uh eight, seven, seven point five. So you'd be adding thirteen, fourteen percent. On the levy, which is uh seven, seventy-seven dollars. I mean, that about a buck for a thousand. That's, though, I mean, I know this is recorded, but don't want me to do that, so.
You have to do that, man. That's napped in math.
It's sixteen million doesn't fit. And then it doesn't leave any room for library, parks, um, public works. Because public works is the same. We're prepared to operate in public works for a while. We, administration, we managed to move and see a scenario in which that works. The users are less enthusiastic about that scenario. You know, I, the library board, the public works employees, the volunteer firefighters. Will not have enthusiasm for that scenario. We can make do. And it'll be reasonably, it'll be safe. It can provide the level of service that it needs. Um, but it won't, it won't meet what we're used to for kind of catching up with the growth of the community. Um, so the other thing you should know is there's the pro and con of this money from the past. First of all, we haven't obtained it, so we can't get too excited about it yet, but. It's, I'd say more than fifty percent chance that we can be successful. If we were planning to add that debt in twenty-eight and now we're gonna add it in twenty-six, there's a cost to that too. You have a carry, basically you're advancing money to your, you're ahead of where your revenue curve is, so you're. The debt in twenty-six is gonna be more expensive than what it would be if you waited for twenty-eight, so. That will reduce our ability to take on additional projects slightly. With the caveat that we'll end up having a very sadist, I mean, the facility would meet our needs for a long time. And it essentially puts the fire department's turn way to the back, right? Then then you're actually took care of them and then they go to the back of the line and you work on your other priorities. If you just do a million dollars of work at second and now. They're gonna stay towards the front of the line and you're gonna still have to deal with that. And you're still gonna have to to this debate, argue, is it fire station, parks, library, power plant? What do you want to do? Because there's not enough money to do all of it under the current fiscal plan. So all other things being equal, you'll see from staff, it's some proposal to try to get the fire station done in twenty-eight. Because that's what we heard from the council is the is the priority. You will give us feedback in the CIP process as to whether that's correct. And then you'll have to determine kind of what's next, but in the CIP, it's unlikely you're gonna see. General fund supported levy recommended for anything other than the fire station. Because I don't, I don't see how you get the debt service in there.
Is everybody in board with that? I mean, you don't have to be committed, but I think we gotta, I think we went to staff to give them direction. So I would assume there's an application process. I would assume there's, there's, have we started the application?
We we are aggressively pursuing kind of money for a fire station.
Okay.
It's more or less that we would, yeah, if you wanna put up a stop sign, then would be a good time. Um, we heard in legislative priorities that generally the fire station has a priority. That the biosolids and Kenny quarter were the three that we heard. Biosolids and Kenny quarter are patches right now. We haven't found the right match for those two. So the fire station seems to be the best match. Of your priorities.
Concerns? I would go for it.
Yeah, we. You know, we. It would be an error not to try.
Seems logical.
I think we have to. Push forward with it.
Yeah, I mean, I think you start with the need, right, and you assess that. And and we talked through the site process, which is where we're at today with keeping that second, so. It would seem, it would seem prudent to go forward, but I'm not holding my breath because to me, fifty percent chance also means fifty percent failure. So.
Or you, Mr. Octin.
Here's a question. Say, say, not this fiscal year, like, the one using your mother, we could try the next fiscal year.
Yes.
So it's not like it's.
I I have a historical question, Scott, and it's a small thing, but um was kind, was Sean Duffy in favor of earmarks?
Hmm, that's a good question. I'm trying to remember if, well, there wasn't the earmark process.
Yeah.
So I don't think we ever had a formal way to understand it. I generally, Ron Kind and Sean Duffy, I don't believe were in favor of earmarks. Ron Kind was also a non earmarker. Until the last, this last round, and even in the last round, he was less enthusiastic because he's a, I think, didn't he work for Proxmire? So that was the golden, the golden piece, or, you know, Proxmire was the, the, the ultimate. Non, I think he's the one that coined the bridge in the wire, and so he was not an earmark guy. And and Kind, to his credit, was pretty principled and. Go through the competitive process and earn grants. There's lots of federal money there and he always supported our community during the process. But ultimately, he helped with the biosolids.
Is there other funding you're considering, other than this DC lobbying that helped advance that fire station margins?
Yeah, I think we should consider some state funding, but we haven't found the right avenue. Because potentially there's even earmarking at the state level.
What did, how did, um, that go with their catch?
Same process. That we're trying right now. Yeah, and they asked for fourteen, they asked for the full project, their fourteen million dollar appeal, but they end up getting seven. And that was one of the largest fire station grants in the whole of Congress, so. And that's the one Senator Baldwin's very familiar with, so she didn't have any, any concerns about supporting her. In her mind, there's already precedent for her and she's on the appropriations committee, so that's super helpful. And we just have not had these opportunities before. We haven't had necessarily, her, Senator Cole was a big earmarker. I mean, he, when Cole was the senator, but that was the, that was before I even went here. So River Falls probably hasn't had an opportunity really to deal with this in ten, fifteen years. Final that I think generally was okay, but um. Would have been, I'm trying to think if he was in a sen- or if he was in the majority. Can't remember, it's gone back and forth a little bit. That's not my strength is national politics history, but. I don't think we really had an opportunity for earmarks until two years ago.
So, anything else that, so as a follow-up, is there? Are any of you, is there any interest in a facilities workshop number two where to be covered the basics of what you were hoping to cover in facilities workshop?
I mean, if you guys bring in more funding, I'd like to probably add that number two, oh wait. So generally, you feel on firm footing overall in facilities and where we're at, what the priorities are and what the requests are. So again, I think through your existing processes, the requests are essentially fire, public works, library. And then a number of part facilities. There are other things people want and are interested in, but I don't think are in the cards to even talk about because. Not to mention, we've had community requests, which I just keep saying. I don't see it, so additional baseball facilities, softball. Buildings, second ice rink for the hockey association, I just, I'm like. I don't see how the city supports that because we didn't have the revenue stream to do it. So don't think there aren't other people out there, uh, grow to share was interested in a kitchen facility. So we've had some interest in BOSI city facilities and we basically said, we got a fire station to build. And then we got a whole list of other things. Library and public works both, which are kind of coming around now, time for investment.
Okay. We've got about seven minutes left before six fifteen. Anybody got anything else? Unlike the mayor, I'm gonna finish early. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll adjourn out of this uh meeting and just give me a minute to shut it down.
Okay.
So Joe, we're adjourned now, so you ready? You got it all straight? You ready to think of all facilities?